I will take a roll call for the open workshop, September 27th, 2017. It's 6:04. Trustee Cruden is here, trustee Desmond is here, trustee Finnerty is here, trustee Garillick is here, trustee Lawande is here, trustee Munoz is here, trustee Ryan is here, vice president Wepak is absent, president Broderick is here. Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Deggan.
Good evening, everyone. I met with the county executive superintendent, Melissa Pierce, for over two and a half hours on Tuesday. We discussed various topics, including our upcoming CUSAC evaluations. Tonight, Dr. Deggan is going to give you some results. He has three experts with him. But before we do that, I just want to go through the other items that occurred since our last meeting. Mr. DeLucia, who's in our front row here, our business consultant, working closely with Brown &amp; Brown on the medical options. We are hoping an initial presentation to be made to the finance committee in October, and I think we're looking at the 13th. Was that the date, Mr. Smith?
The 12th of August. I was going to call the finance committee, but Dr. Wonko is sometime to see.
Okay, so that will be probably one of those two dates in October. Mr. Coleman, our curriculum consultant, was onsite last week. He reviewed mathematics and science curriculums and stated, overall, the curriculum work is impressive, and he's looking forward to reviewing the humanities documents on his next visit. Again, this will help us in our preparation for CUSAC. As you all know, mandatory professional development requires specified or in statute and regulation for particular groups in education. As we discussed in previous workshops, the district is now using the Safe Schools online training. The system is at no cost to the district. Mr. Lopez has been very successful using this with many of our employees, and tonight he's going to explain how he is planning on expanding that program. Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, Safe Schools has been really going well. It's a great resource for us. We've trained our teachers, administrators, and secretaries already in mandatory training, and we will continue to do that, whether it be during a PLC or a half day, staff training day. This Friday, we have staff development. In years past, we would have to pay for someone to come in and present to our teacher assistants, which is a group of close to 300 of our employees. On Friday, they will be trained. They have been given emails. They will log in at their schools where they could stay at the building that they work at, and they will receive the training as our teachers and our secretary have done. And that's mandatory training, and that would be youth suicide, awareness prevention, phoning, recognition and response, sexual harassment, staff to staff, law enforcement, exposure prevention, child abuse, mandatory reporting, and student drug inhalation. And then on the Thursday, the third day of our teachers' convention, I come in and do mandatory training for our bus drivers and custodians. We will have given them emails, setting them up, and having them log in and taking part in the mandatory training for that group as well. So, you know, I'd just like to say thank you to the technology department, to all of our directors and our teaching staff members for cooperating, and, you know, we haven't heard any complaints, so we're looking forward to continue to be successful in the area of professional development. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Smith will now report an update of the prescription and health plans, our shared services agreement with the city, and give a small facilities update that they pertain to Horace Mann School, as well as the P E C E Center, which you probably haven't used that term in 18 years. The Bayonne High School Physical Education Community Education Center. The entire complex, not just the Corby Wing. Mr. Smith?
In regards to facilities, just so you know, Dr. Wonko didn't mention, we had a small power outage last night on the east side, which did affect Lincoln Community School. We were there bright and early this morning to make sure everything was okay, and then later this afternoon, I was told that a vehicle struck a pole downtown in Juliet Street. Our facility was offline for some time, and we do have freezers down there with food for our program, so Mike Kubert was watching those. In regards to Horace Mann, we walked through yesterday, Mr. Kubert, Mr. Nolan, myself, along with the architect and the engineers from the window company. There are about six or seven items left on a punch list that we, they will address, and that project should be buttoned up by mid-October, at which time we'll be able to put the remainder of our paperwork in and get the remaining 35% of that rod grant money back in the district, so we're happy about that. We also walked through the ice rink complex with the architect and the engineer who did that work. If you remember, the city bonded for those projects about two years ago, and there were about a half a dozen small items there that seem to be, that need to be addressed before the city is willing to make final payment to the engineering firm and the contractor. So, they're minor issues, nothing really, really major, but they do need to be addressed. On Tuesday morning, we met with Terrence Malloy, trustee Desmond, Dr. Mader, Mr. Pasqual, our attorney, Matt Bolden, our accountant. We met to go over the shared service agreements that we have presently with the city, ranging from use of facilities to garbage pickup, to get service on the ice rink, and what we did is we memorialized that meeting. Matt Pasqual, Richard Pasqual, our attorney, memorialized it in a memo to the members, and we're looking for some information from the city that Mr. Malloy said he would get to us, and then hopefully we can move forward with the shared service agreements that we do have with the city for use of facilities and things of that nature, so we're looking forward to that. On the prescription end, last week was a very smooth week. This week, couple bumps in the road. I got a couple calls from a couple of employees who were having some difficulty. I asked them to email me their concerns, at which time I reached out to Kaylee Roscoe, who was our pro act rep, and we were able to come to an agreement on those. These are going to pop up until everybody, I guess, runs a full cycle of the prescriptions that they are utilizing. So, we're working with our employees hand in hand. When you deal with close to 1,000 employees in a prescription plan, things pop up of that nature. Some of it is as simple a fix as the prescribing physician checking off DAW dispense as written. This way, they would not get the generic brand, they would get the brand that the prescribing physician put on there. So, there are some things like that. There are other things. Some things are not covered under this plan, that were covered under the other plan, but there are steps to get through those processes, and like anything new, it's a learning curve, and we're working with them. As Dr. Wonko also said, Brown &amp; Brown has gotten back to us. About five different insurers have touched base with Brown &amp; Brown about the possibility if we are willing to shop out our healthcare insurance. Presently, with school employee benefit plan, the companies that have responded so far are Aetna, AmeriHealth, Horizon, Integrity Health, and United. So, Brown &amp; Brown is going to come into finance at our next finance committee meeting, which I'm hoping is October 12th. I'll touch base with those committee members, and they'll give a presentation on the benefits of these programs. Now, Mr. DeLucia told me tonight that last night, the Camden Board of Education voted to leave the state plan. So, you can see, a lot of big players are leaving the state plan, which puts the onus for those claims on districts such like Bayonne. So, we're going to look at this with a very close eye and take the recommendations of our finance committee and naturally the board as to, you know, what your pleasure is in this. But like I always say, it's nice to have options, and hopefully these options can lead to some overall savings that will benefit the district. And that's all I have, Dr. Wonko.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I have a question about that. Is it possible with all these big districts like Camden leaving, I understand that that might actually increase our liability, but could it possibly go the other way where the state benefits plan will actually start reducing their rates to try to entice districts to come back?
They may throw us a bone maybe for a year and lower our rates. It's highly unlikely, but competition does breed better rates, so that's what we're hoping for. Hopefully, at the finance, we'll have a much better picture, and we'll be able to get back to you folks.
In compliance with New Jersey state regulations, the Bayonne School District is required to present the results of the annual assessment data from Park, NJASK, and NJBCT within 60 days of receipt of the information to the Board of Education. Understanding how to interpret these useful statistics concerning our district's students' assessment scores will assist in improving instruction and closing the achievement gaps. Dr. Deggan will now review our spring 2017 data. Remember, there are no comparisons to county schools. It's just overall state data. Dr. Deggan?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Good evening, board president Broderick and honorable trustees. Tonight, we'll be presenting year three of the Park assessment data. I'd like to welcome with us this evening, we have our director of mathematics, Dawn Aiello, our director of science, Tara Deggan, and our director of English Language Arts, Nancy Ruane. Thank them for being here this evening. And I'd also like to acknowledge and recognize our data analyst, Dr. Desjardin, for her support with this project. This first, excuse me, this first slide discusses the fact that we must present the data to the Board of Education, not only because it is a requirement, but also because it drives a conversation in our district on what we are doing well and what we need to work on for our parents and students. As we present the 2017 assessment, I would like to take this time to thank the staff of the Bayonne School District for making this administration successful. The spring 2017 test scores were returned to our schools at a faster rate compared to New Jersey's 40-year history of statewide assessments. The turnaround time of these score reports will provide educators with the opportunity to use the results to tailor classroom instruction to support individual student needs. And I have a bullet on the bottom just pointing out the window from the spring assessment in the elementary and the high school. So, what are the primary objectives of the Park assessment system? Park is aligned to the state's new academic standards that are guiding what and how students are taught in class. In addition to providing an overall score in both English Language Arts and Math, the test also shows how students are performing in comparison to peers, in his or her grade level, school and district, as well as useful information about the student's strengths and areas for improvement. The assessment goes beyond multiple choice questions to get a deeper understanding of student learning. The questions require students to apply his or her knowledge and skills to address real-world problems and describe reasoning. Because the test questions are more in-depth, parents and teachers receive more detailed information about each other's learning from the previous test. So, what we're looking here is critical thinking, creativity, communication, and critical thinking, which are 21st century skills, and this is what this test brings that the NJHS did not have. How are Park assessments used to meet federal requirements? I just wanted to put this slide in. In 2010 and 2011, 46 states adopted the Common Core state standards. The Park assessment measures the Common Core state standards. The Common Core state standards were more rigorous, and they were fewer, and what they were, what the goal of the Common Core standards was to take what was going on in our city. So, a student in Bayonne could be compared to a student in Chicago, could also be compared to a student in Singapore, and that was the idea behind the Common Core. However, in 2016, the Common Core was rejected for something known as the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So, we had about two years to implement the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and we appreciate the fact that you allowed Mr. Coleman to come in to make sure that we are aligning our curriculum with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. In the second bullet, I also talk about the importance of Park for participation. It's a 95% participation rate, and I know in the past we talked about refusals and opt-outs, but it is important that students participate in the Park. And this is just a little snapshot of where we are in year three. Since the first Park administration, thousands of more students at every grade level have now taken assessments, providing more parents and schools with a chance to gauge how children are progressing academically. And what I like to point out is New Jersey has been always a leader in state assessments. There is a test that goes on, it's called the NATE, National Association of Educational Progress. What they do is, because we receive federal dollars, they will come into our district and they'll say, this year, we're choosing grade four in Woodrow Wilson, we're going to choose Henry Harris, grade eight, and in a high school. And the NATE measures grade four, grade eight, and grade 12, reading, writing, and sometimes geography. And I can let you know that in New Jersey, we're always successful. It's New Jersey and Massachusetts. This part right here, if you have children in a district and you are used to seeing proficient or advanced proficient, we now have scale scores that are aligned in levels 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, and this will help as we go through the presentation. Each performance level is broad, and it's defined by the student's overall scale score. It goes from did not meet expectations all the way to exceeding expectations. In New Jersey, a four or a five would indicate that a student is on track to be college or career-ready, and that's what we set the standard in New Jersey. There are some other Park states that look at a three, and they would say, the approaching expectation might be something that you would require for graduation requirements. So, these are the scale scores that are used. So, at this point, I want to focus in on ELA. The focus here is on English Language Arts in spring 2015 through spring 2017, and the score report, as Dr. Wonko explained, for all students in the Bayonne School District. We see here that the year-to-year increase in ELA for grades three, five, six, seven, eight, 10, and 12, and there's a significant increase in grade four and eight, however, a two-point decline in grade four. But I also like to note, in grades seven and eight and 11, we are at the 60% threshold. If you would delve a little bit deeper, if we compare these findings to the state trend analysis, students in grade eight ELA not only increased in percentile value from 15.6 in 2016 to 17, but the district surpassed the state by 1.5%. And if we now turn to grade 10, you will notice an increase from 47.5 to 50.2 respectively. However, the Bayonne School District in 2017 surpassed the state in terms of meeting or exceeding the expectations. And this last one is wonderful news. Even though you see, as we look at grade 11, there was a common theme, Bayonne School District surpassed the state of New Jersey by 21.2%. So, that's wonderful news for what we're doing in the high school and the English Language Arts. Some areas to address, but we do have Director Ruane with us to answer questions regarding that. Okay? Now, looking at mathematics. This slide represents mathematics, and you will notice that grades in four and five, there was a slight decline, 5.9% in grade four and a 3.3% in grade five. In grade six, we continue to remain flat, and in grades seven and eight, we have modest increases. However, if you review the grade three percentages, you will see that there is a positive increase from 44.3 to 50.1, noting a 5% increase. And I think that's important because those are the students that were educated in the Common Core, so they were ones in pre-K, K1 and 2. So, we're starting to see that impact. Take a look at high school now, and also, we had grade eight algebra. This slide represents spring 2015, spring 2017 mathematics Park results. You will notice that there was a slight increase in percentile values in each subject area in Algebra 1, 1.6, Algebra 2, 1%, and Geometry, 5.6. There has been a representation of growth in each of the categories, Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry. However, this is compounded by a downward trend, noting the decline of the following from 2015 in Algebra 1 and Algebra 2. You know, myself looking at that, you have to remember, in the high school, the first year of the Park, there was a lot of refusal, there was a lot of sabotage, there was some kids that, this could go for English Language Arts also, and I'm not making excuses, I'm just making an explanation. And we also have to remember that there was two tests that took place. We had the performance base, remember this, and then we had the end of year. So, if you're looking for that sophomore jump, I think you see the sophomore jump in year three. So, if you're looking at trend analysis, I like to say, we are starting to go in the accurate direction. Okay, I just want to show, and you don't have to read this, I'm just going to explain what this is, and we spoke about this in the past, that for the class of 2021, that English 10 and Algebra 1 will be the graduation requirement. So, I just wanted everybody to be clear, and that is also in your appendix. So, they do have alternate assessments that students can take, a portfolio if they do not pass the test, but those will not be available for the class of 2021. And I know we have Director Aiello tonight. There are some students that are currently in grade nine that we're going to have to have a plan now, and we're going to discuss, obviously, with the curriculum committee to make sure that these students are eligible to graduate, and we've always done that, whether it's credit recovery, et cetera. This slide represents a comparison of Bayonne Board of Education with changes in Level 1 and Level 2 and Level 4 and Level 5. You will notice that the trends in English Language Arts are very similar to that in the state of New Jersey. So, the way you would read this slide is, on the left-hand side, you want to see red arrows down, meaning that students in Level 1 and 2 are going down, and they're slowly moving into Level 4 and 5. So, what we do is here, in English Language Arts, you can see that our students in Level 1 and 2 are moving into our Level 4 and 5, which is college and career-ready. And then you'll see, on the right-hand side, where the state went down in English 11, we have to take those best practices that are going on in our school, and you can see that there's an 18% jump. So, the English teachers in the high school have really got the best practices going. Just a little information that we need to provide you for CUSAC, and this is the number of students tested in English Language Arts. Again, we can't make too many determinations because there's a array of variables, student enrollment, student retention, student refusal, medical excuses, but it gives us an idea about how many students are taking the test on the grade level. And in English Language Arts, again, I wanted to highlight some of the areas in reference to the state, and we see here, the highlighted portions indicate the strongest or largest percent increases as compared to the state of New Jersey, and our green box, again, represents grade 11 with 13.3 percentile over compared to the state. And then you also see here, in grade six, grade seven, five, grade eight, grade nine, grade 10, 11, increases over the state. And then the year-to-year increase, we see ELA for elementary, grade three, grade six, grade seven, bubbles pointing up, and then again, a modest increase in grade nine and grade 10 from 16 to 17. Same slide, comparison to the state with regard to math. This slide, I'm sorry, represents a comparison to the state-level data and will be used to better help with the planning and instruction. You will notice that in the levels four and five in the state, there is an increase in all areas. Bayonne was able to provide an increase in grades three, five, seven, and eight, and in regards to grade one and two in comparison with the state, some of the trends mimicked or resembled state transitions. You will notice, grade three, that the state declined 4.4%, however, the district declined 11, which then the students were able to achieve four and five, or an 8% rate. So, we can see that our grade three students are moving into that three, four, and five, and again, going back, I believe, to the curriculum that's established and the fact that those students have gone through the Common Core standard. I did put a little trend analysis together over the three years. Bayonne is highlighted in green. We have the Park, the state, and district factor group. District Factor Group are schools that are similar in economic to Bayonne, and what we have here is that we're right on par with that, a little bit under the state over the three years, but right there, with you see, with similar schools and with the Park states. Looking at Algebra 2. Again, we do not have the information for the district factor group. And one more time, looking at geometry and the green line representing Bayonne. Just for you to review, again, the number of students that were tested this year in all grade levels in mathematics. And we do not want to make any comments of that because it could be changes in student enrollment, student retention status, testing refusals, class enrollment counts. It's just, these were just the numbers of students that were tested. Now, looking at math with respect to state. As expected, the test results reveal areas where significant attention is needed. It should not be surprising that the results demonstrate that, on average, our youngest students meet or exceed expectation at higher levels than our high school students. After all, our third grade began their schooling as kindergarten students in 11, 12, and have been continuously educated in our new standards. Yet, the results in high school, particularly in mathematics, demonstrate that there's significant work ahead to align curriculum, practices, and to better staff of student learning throughout students' career. And, you know, we're happy to have Director Aiello here this evening because she has a lot of wonderful suggestions to help us with that algebra. And I want to also be clear that the algebra is not just a Bayonne issue, this is a statewide issue. Looking at our increases from 16 to 17, we see three, seven, and eight. And in the high school, I talked about that trajectory going in the right direction increases in Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry. Science, science is tested in fourth grade, science is tested in eighth grade, and then we do life science in Bayonne High School in ninth grade. Traditionally, very strong in grade four in the NJHS science, always in the 80%, and with grade eight, traditionally, you know, in the upper 70s also. It remains positive, the grouping percentiles of 70 and 80%. And you see, our trend analysis, the lines are like flat, and they're right even with each other with respect to what's going on in the district factor groups and the state with four and eight science. And that's our eighth grade science. And our next slide is our biology, okay? There has been a steady trend within the 40% percentile from 2012 to 2017 with respect to the biology test. Last part of the presentation would be, I would just like to have a conversation now with the directors about, you know, what they've taken away from this and what they're planning to do with the information at hand. Our first director would be Mrs. Ruane, will take a look at English Language Arts. But do you have any questions for me about the assessment program, or how it's going, or anything that you see?
How many refusals district-wide this year?
Ooh, I don't have that number. It was a lot less than the past. I have the number, I don't have it for you. Now, what we do is, trustee Munoz, every time I receive a letter, I log it.
Okay.
If you needed that, I could have gotten it, I couldn't put it in there, but I do have a number.
Okay, I was just curious.
Now, and I, I want to just talk about refusal also. There is also a part of, that there's that sabotage effect that doesn't happen, where students go into the test and they don't take it seriously, or they go into the test and they pick and choose the wrong answers on purpose. As a matter of fact, I remember monitoring the test, and I saw a young lady that I thought we lost her answers. We were quite upset. It was very disappointing. We ran into the room. No, my mother said, just sit here and stare. And so, we were looking out, but I do have those numbers, I just don't have them with me. But they are a lot less than that first year. The first year was very difficult. The first year, when you had the performance base and the end of year, some students began the test, so we were like, okay, this is great. Then, when that grassroots movement started, we saw a dip, so all that work we put up front just died because we had no valid scores in the second half, but it was a lot less than like two years ago.
Well, all the numbers are based on 5,940 students.
Who took the test?
Yeah.
Right.
What happened to all the 4,000?
Well, it's three to eight, and then nine, 10, 11, 12.
They're not tested.
Three to eight, okay.
Younger.
Right, no pre-K, 1 or 2. As a matter of fact, trustee Lawande, you cannot test and standardize in K1 or 2 anymore. You can use local assessments, but you can't use a standardized assessment.
And that's how many students we have from K?
Pre-K.
Pre-K till?
Oh, the exact number. I would estimate 700 at grade level.
700 times four.
And then, when will the Park scores be made available to parents?
So, I can't release it until I present it to you first, obviously, which I'm doing tonight. My office is working diligently. I'd like to get them out October 6th in the progress reports, which is, I think, next year with the progress reports. So, what we plan to do is, just so everybody's aware, when they go home, they go home with the element.
You're speaking as a parent.
I was speaking completely as a parent.
With the elementary, with the elementary, I'll send them home with their folders. With the high school, it would be a mail.
Yes.
Working at the charts.
I think it would be safe to say possibly that many of the students that opted out that first year were students that didn't do well, let's say, the next year.
Possibly. And present, that's what they talk about, that sophomore jump. And present, that's what they talk about, that sophomore jump. Students get comfortable with the items, and then they get comfortable with the computer and the format, and then they understand. It also helps the teachers going through it, is a comfort level with those who administer it. And, you know, starting a test, stopping the test.
Do we have, like, what is the requirement of the student within the Park within graduation, let's say, where it's an onus on both sides?
And state says that they can ultimately, if they don't pass any of those at the Park, or they can do a portfolio assessment, which, there is still a parachute for them, but it's a concern for us because that parachute's probably going to cost money because we have to provide a credit recovery, or an extra class, or possibly even double periods.
But at least they realize it's something they have to do. I think when it first started, there was no requirement to the test, is what they believed, at least, whether it was or wasn't.
I think what we're also finding, and I know some of the trustees had conversations with parents, when they're applying to programs, they're saying, "Well, I didn't take the Park." And now our directors are saying, "What can we, what multiple measures can we use to place students in programs?" This is just one of the many things that districts use. They have observations, they use teacher recommendations, they use prior-year test scores, they use report cards and progress reports. But the parents are doing a disservice now, is because when they apply to Gateways to STEM or Gifted and Talented programs, "Well, I didn't know that was going to be part of it." Well, it is. It's one of the tests that we use to make sure that these students get into these programs. And it's the one that's standard across the board.
Is there anything on the website that basically says to apply to STEM or apply to Gifted and Talented, these are the things that we will measure you on?
You know, Mr. Castell may know that. I know he has a workshop in the spring where everybody's invited, and he goes over what the criteria are. I don't know if it's on the website, but I do know there's a parent information set for Gifted and Talented.
On a positive note, this is not a question, it's a comment.
Oh, that's nice.
I remember back in the day when I was teaching, one of the major goals was to move our students to advanced proficiency. And from looking at the data that I'm looking at, we have really made strides in not just doing partially proficient, which is what, a 3? We're having more, we're having more 4s and 5s. And I saw in 2014, when we piloted the Park, which I think is something that we really, especially in ELA, having advanced proficiency, and that's huge. It's really good.
You know, I got to give credit to our teachers, they worked very hard on this, they take it very seriously. But I would also say, we moved, the first year, we learned from the larger testing sites and providing the chairs and giving them the reference sheets up front, and, you know, Park assignments, where you're going to be, all that helps. You know, whether it was in the high school or the elementary schools, and the teachers, and what the directors do with the professional development, we want to be moving in the right direction for us. I thank you for the comment, thank you.
Just one comment. I know all of the subject matter, you see, what I think is great news for the district. But one of the things that sometimes gets lost in the testing is the students, and I'm talking about district-wide, students' ability to use technology in taking the test. And that's an important thing, and you can see over time how the use of technology increases their proficiency.
See, the key thing is, we want to make sure that the students are comfortable with the technology because we don't want to be testing their skills on the equation editor. We want to be testing their skills on the content. So I guess when you have a Chromebook in front of you, it's like a watch that I, you look at, that's what these students... They're familiar with it. They informate versus automate, and that's a key, you know, educational term right now, is that they're not using it as a tool, they're using it, you know, as collaborative. And I don't need to just put my work on the, up here, I can share my work with someone in Bayonne, France. And that's what we, the world is flat, and that's what the Chromebook or the internet does for us. So it gives us authentic, real-life experience.
Making kids global citizens.
Yeah. So I just made a few comments, do you mind from the direct...
Okay. No, I have two, yeah, so should I wait till I do?
No, go ahead.
All right, so I just have two questions, you know, one for math, for Director Aiello. What are we planning to do to address the drop from 3rd grade to 4th grade in, what was it? In the Parks, in the Park scores? There was a drop from Grade 3 where they were excelling this past year, and then those kids, I guess, went from 3rd to 4th, there was a pretty big drop.
Right, yeah, a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, so what do we plan to address that?
Let's talk about math.
Okay, well, that's why I actually asked the question now, or later?
So, right, Director Aiello?
I did, I did ask, in all fairness, I did.
Your question was regarding Grade 3 mathematics?
Yeah, well, what do we plan to do to address that dip? What are we trying to do to address that from Grade 3 to 4? Because it seemed like a pretty big drop.
You're saying the Grade 3 scores are higher, and the Grade 4 scores are lower, is what you're...
Right, well, I was looking at the comparisons, and it looked like the Grade 4 students from last year scored way low than they did in Grade 3. I was looking at the mark, right? You know, I was looking at the years prior, so I'm like, well, they were obviously, those Grade 4 students were in Grade 3 before. They did so well in the Grade 3 math component for Park, but then when you look at their Grade 4 scores, they just kind of went down.
Okay. Your question is with regards to Grade 3 and Grade 4. If you see the Grade 3 scores, they are, the percentages, they are higher than the Grade 4 right now. But you have to remember, the cohort of students going from Grade 3, Grade 4, there are two different cohorts of students. So I just want to identify that, you're not comparing the same exact student.
No, I was comparing, no, I was comparing the Grade 3 scores from 2015 to the Grade 4 scores for 2016, which would be the same cohort of students.
Okay.
There was a drop, a significant drop between those, yes.
Yes, and the other thing that we have to look at with regards to mathematics, and this is a focus that I want to make with mathematics and with our discussion here today. You have to remember, every single year these students are in mathematics, the rigor gets more intense, more challenging year to year. And sometimes we may see a little gap in Grade 3. And if we don't close that gap in Grade 3, that gap does become larger in Grade 4, and then Grade 5, Grade 6, all the way up to Algebra 2.
That's what I asked.
As you can see, the score, the percentage of 4s and 5s do decrease, even with the state. So what are we doing as a district to ensure that when we identify a child with a gap, what are we doing about it? And there's, that's a very powerful statement, and there are some things that I think we all need to agree upon. And one of the things that I want to highlight, and it's instructional time. And math instructional time, I'm going to call it sacred. And if a student is in a math class, that math class should not be interrupted. That math class, the child should not be taking out for another activity. And that's just not in Grade 3 and Grade 4, that's throughout the whole entire progression of their education. The other thing I want to talk about instructional time, and I'm spitting it to this topic because it's so key and so critical. I've been talking to other people in the county who have students that are similar to ours in Hudson County. I'm part of the HAMA, which is the Hudson Area Math Alliance. And one question I asked them is, "What is your instructional time for Grade 3 through 8?" Grade 3, 4, and all the way up in what we're talking about here. And the districts say it's block math instructional time, that means consecutive, for 80 to 90 minutes. I know Jersey City has 90 minutes, and other districts in Hudson County have 80 minutes. That's critically important for all of our students, not just Grade 4, but all of our students. Another issue I would like to bring up, in our district, I just want to make you aware of this. In our district, now, other districts have two periods of math a day that are consecutive in Hudson County. In our district, Grade 3, 4, 5, and 6, we do have a requirement of 10 periods a week, which would be two periods a day, doesn't necessarily have to be consecutive. But our 7th grade students only require eight periods of math a week. I think that's important to highlight. And our Grade 8 students have nine periods of required math a week. Where our peers in Hudson County have 10 in 7th grade, and have 10 in 8th grade. We're working with 8, 9. I think that's something that we should all work together to address. Now, to me, that's instructional time, so you're going to say, "Don, Director Aiello, you've got to give me some data about instructional time and how that will improve our Park scores." Because we just don't want to invest instructional time without getting something back from it. You know, it's important. So, I have data here with me. Last year I had Gateway to STEM, and Gateway to STEM was open to all 7th and 8th grade students in the district. The 7th grade students that I recruited for Gateway to STEM, regardless of your ability, regardless if you have an IEP, a 504, or if you had a 1 on the Park or a 5 on the Park, if you filled out that application correctly, and if they didn't, we called them, you were able to get into our Saturday Gateways to STEM. I provided them six Saturdays of instruction, an hour and 15 minutes of mathematic instruction. These are 7th grade students, 7th grade students. So, Bayonne's 7th grade district Park scores. Students who scored a 4 or 5, who passed the Park in Grade 7 last year, and our district was 38%. I'm not satisfied with that. The state is 39%. The state shouldn't be satisfied with that. What do you think the students scored who went to Gateway to STEM? Now you're going to say, "Well, Don, there are students who wanted to come on Saturday." So you should expect maybe a 5 to 10% increase, right? You should expect them to go from 38% to 48%, right? They went up to 69%. That's a 30, 30-plus point increase just from the extra instructional time. Then you might say, "But, Don, that's a special math teacher you had working on Saturday." No, it was not. There were three different math teachers. They rotated because it was a Saturday, I couldn't get every single teacher to work every Saturday, they had a live, too. Matter of fact, two of those teachers are no longer with us in our district this year. But there were three teachers, and with three different teachers who did not know these students every single day, but just had good quality, extra math instructional time, we went up over 30 points.
And that was only six sessions?
Excuse me?
Only six sessions?
There were only six. I offered it to two separate groups so I can have a larger body. It was 12 Saturdays out of the year, so six, two different sessions, so yes.
How many students?
Excuse me?
How many students took advanced to STEM?
The total amount of students was, I'll give you in just a second. 157.
You had 157 students come here every Saturday?
Yep.
Good for them.
Yes, I did.
Be nice to be able to incorporate the time into regular school days so that you're getting it, all of them.
So instead of receiving 157, I can get all of our students, yes.
Don, that's a grant, too.
Excuse me?
Just pay for the grant money.
This year, thank you, this year, the Bayonne Education Foundation is funding it, and it costs $6,000. $6,000. And I'm here with, and Tara, we're here on Saturdays because Tara does the science component for Grade 8, and I do the math component for Grade 7. So that's just one piece. And then another piece, I'm going to stick on this instructional time because it's really important to me because I don't think we have enough instructional time for mathematics in this district. Excuse me?
The consecutive instructional time.
Consecutive instructional time, and also the right amount of time. If we only have eight periods in Grade 7, can we agree?
Well, can I, why is there such a difference between, you know, 10, you know, like, why is it, why did it all of a sudden drop to 7 in 7th grade, or 8 in 7th grade?
It's a matter of...
29 in 8th grade, like, what else are they receiving that the amount of time has decreased?
It's because of teacher schedules in elementary schools. That's why. And to make the schedules work, to make sure all the teachers have a balanced schedule, because they only teach 35 periods a week. So it's a scheduling concern. Now, I, okay.
Concern of the kids, and we have to find a way to make it work.
Can you just please speak louder?
The concern for everyone are the children and their scores, and their, what they're learning and what they're getting. So we have to find a way to make it work. So it might be a teacher's schedule thing, which I respect, but there's, I'm sure there's an answer to make it work.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
I don't know if you're going to like it, a middle school.
Well, I've been saving for the school program forever, but that's me.
I'm just looking at my boss to make sure I'm okay to speak.
All right.
And I have another example of how instructional time produces good scores. For our Algebra 1 Grade 8, last year we had 261 8th graders. So that's just not the top 10% of our students because we have about 650 to 700 students per grade level. So we had 261 students last year engaging in Algebra 1, but we increased the instructional time. I did. And out of the 261, we had over 81% of them passing the Algebra 1 Park, which clearly exceeds the state expectations. And yes, they were the higher achieving students. But then if you look at our Grade 9 students last year, who took the Algebra 1 Park for only 40 minutes, we had plus, a little over 13% of them passing. So do you see the, and instructional time, I think, is important. And then years ago when we had the HESPA, we did have the double-period Algebra 2 class, and that's how our HESPA scores are very high.
What about if you get another teacher for math, instead of another school? Would that add to the time, or?
Thank you for asking that question. I would love to have more math-certified teachers. I just want to let everyone know to have transparency. Last year I had 30 high school math teachers scheduled, you know, covering the high school schedule. Do you know how many I have this year? 23. The rigor is higher, the test is now a graduation requirement, we can't avoid it, and I have less teachers. In 7th and 8th grade last year, I had 20 teachers, certified math teachers. This year I have 18. So do I think this year is going to be a fabulous year in mathematics? I'm going to try my best, and my teachers are going to try their best. But I wish we had more instructional time, and I wish we had more certified math teachers.
Do you have a suggestion on how you increase instructional time? If the period, if, we have a set period today, we start, what, at 8:32, and we end at 4:40. How do we increase instructional time?
At the high school or elementary school?
High school.
Okay.
For Algebra 1, the Algebra 2, which seems to be the most critical at this point. Well, the 9th grade, I think, is the lowest scoring.
Yes, you're correct.
From remembering. So how does one increase the instructional time if your timeframe is limited? How do you increase it? What do you eliminate in order to increase the instructional time?
Okay, and that's an excellent question, I'm glad you asked it. When I'm looking at 9th grade students, there's a lot of different variables. And I also talked to the Hudson County Math Alliance with regards to that because they have the same struggle we do. We, you know, we're all in the same situation. Excuse me?
No, they don't, they have more money.
Well, yes, but with instructional time and students not being proficient in 9th grade, and reviewing a lot of the information that the state has put out with regards to clarification for the Algebra 1 Park, a way we can do it without eliminating an elective class or a class that a child may like would possibly be an Algebra 1 course that runs over two years. Because 9th grade students have a tendency of meeting a maturity level, especially since we don't have a middle school, you were in the high school. 9th grade students are the most challenging students to teach, in my experience of 18 years in this district. I'd rather have a 10th, 11th, or 12th grade student, and it's the maturity. They were in elementary, K through 8, they were babied, you know, the teacher walks from here to there. Now in 9th grade, you're trying to get them in the class, you're trying to get them to focus, hormones are bouncing all over the place. So those weak students who enter 9th grade that we are concerned that may not pass the Park, my suggestion would make it, we make the class a two-year. So they take Algebra 1 Part 1, Grade 9, Algebra 1 Part 2 in Grade 10, and then in Grade 10, they'll take the Algebra 1 Park. So they still only have 40 minutes of math in Grade 9 and Grade 10. Then you're going to say, well, then you're putting them on a track that where they will be taking Algebra 2 in Grade 12. But I don't want to do that because I don't want to save that graduation requirement to Grade 12. You know what I'm talking about. Absolutely. So then I would say, in Grade 11, they take a geometry and Algebra 2 concurrently, maybe two different periods of the day. But if a student takes both geometry and Algebra 2, did you know they're only responsible for one of the Parks? And that, the algebra always trumps the geometry. So if a student's in an Algebra 2 and a geometry, then they only have to take the Algebra 2 Park. So then, in essence, you have your weakest student who takes the Algebra 1 in Grade 10 and the Algebra 2 in Grade 11, and he will never have to take the geometry Park, which his score or her score will not be part of our presentation, and they'll still be on track for senior year. still be on track for senior year completing all the math requirements.
Well, that was gonna be my next question. I thought geometry was a required course for high school graduation.
Geometry is a required course for high school graduation. They are taking the geometry in grade eleven, but they're also taking the Algebra II. So they're taking a geometry class and an Algebra II class. And this has been done before. I actually taught that type of class when I was a teacher here. You can do them concurrently. And then, in that situation, they get their geometry five credits, they get their Algebra II five credits. But when it comes to part, you don't make a student take two math parks at the same time. It's just, it's just not allowed by the state. So they would only have to take the Algebra II part.
Yeah, but what about college? If you wanna take extra classes to get college credits, you wouldn't be able to do that if you're taking Algebra I and Algebra II freshman year in sophomore. Because I took extra classes to get to college, and then I had college credits.
They would be able, because they would complete Algebra II in grade eleven. So grade twelve, if they wanted to continue to take more math classes, we have proven stats, and last year, we were able to offer students if they chose to get college credits from NJCU. So we would still be able to offer that. So it would not box a child out of that.
On a statewide basis, are there any districts that are doing well in mathematics? Because this looks like it's not very good.
State results in mathematics?
Are there any districts where half of the kids are in the top tier? Is there any district where the math matches English? Because it looks like, actually, the profession has a problem, not the students. That's what it looks like here.
The test might, the test might have a problem.
Or the test might be problematic. There's something not aligned right here.
Well, wait, wait.
I suggest that we move some of this to our curriculum committee, because we do have a public meeting tonight at eight, and we have two other people.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I took so much time.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was amazing.
Good evening. I just, vulgar statements, it's brief, that I want to share with you. First of all, I stand here as the proud director of English ELA. And you can see by the data, and we all know that data speaks by itself, that we have demonstrated greater proficiency in all areas: comprehension, vocabulary, writing, compared to the performance from 2015 to 2017. In reference to what you said, Trustee Nunes, not only did our grade levels go up, with the exception of grade four, so did the children from grade three to four, to four, to five, to five, to six. That table is also in your booklet. In our quest to improve student achievement and to raise our test scores, teachers' lesson planning and classroom instruction must continue to reflect ongoing analysis of data. Park, district assessments, summative and formative tasks in the classroom. Implementation tasks, implementation of best practices for the specific skills that are needed by our students must be ongoing and reflected in daily lesson plans. If it is not, that will be a conversation at the school level. PLCs. At our PLCs, we discuss instructional practices, including, but not limited to, appropriate use of assignments to improve instruction aligned to the New Jersey student standards. I increased the number of elementary grade-level PLCs this year, and I think that has contributed greatly to our success. Our new curriculum in our elementary school. I spoke to you last year about our new curriculum. I ensured you that we were going to take a survey from all teachers that are using it, and we had great feedback from the teachers. And we changed anything in the curriculum for this year that we deem necessary for the students of the district, in particular, grade levels. Our success is also based on the sharing of ideas across the district by grade level. Professional developments. Although our professional development is usually based on what teachers should do, we must also keep in mind that we must include what students learn. We are going to continue our online version of our nonfiction program, Nuzella. We will continue to develop critical reading skills, which is analyzing text or multiple texts, to determine meaning of words, reasoning, inferencing, understanding of literary terms, and identifying textual evidence to answer inferential questions. I always tell the teachers this, and I believe in this, and I continue to work on this. Variances among our students in our classrooms can now result in lowered expectations for their learning, especially by denying them access to the kinds of rich text experiences of others. And how do we achieve this? We achieve this by scaffolding our instruction, differentiating our instruction, and accommodations and modifications. In closing, I both recognize and applaud all the teachers of the ELA, staff in the grammar schools, and also at the high school, their commitment to excellence. And in keeping with our new district theme, Bayonne Public Family is moving from good to bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you a little information about the information that you saw on the slides, and then I'm going to talk to you a little about where the Science Department is going in the future. The data that you are looking at this evening is based on the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. We are now moving into the Next Generation Science Standards, which is called now the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science. So the data you are seeing for grades four through grades eight is based on an old version of standards. We are now moving past that. So at this point, in 2017, 2018, our K through five students are now working under new curriculum documents, diagnostic tests, and district assessments correlated to the Next Generation Science Standards. This is for K through five. We moved over grades six through twelve for the 2016-2017 school year. So we did middle school and high school first. This was a requirement, and now we're doing K through five this year. Next year, you are going to see a completely different set of data, as the testing will now be in grades five, eight, and eleven. So the elementary standards now for K through five are grade-level standards. So that test in grade five is going to encompass K through five standards. Then they will be tested once again on the grade-banded standards in middle school, in grade eight, and now in grade eleven. So currently, you're seeing biology competency test results. The students took the test at the end of their biology course. Now, instead of just being tested on the life science standards, the students will now be tested on all of the standards: physical science, earth and space, environmental science, and the engineering design process and tasks. So next year, new data. What we're doing right now to prepare for these tests, over the last three years, the teachers have been provided high-quality professional development on the new standards. It's a different approach to science teaching. It's hands-on, minds-on learning. Students are rolling bowling balls, they are making things with Legos, they are computer coding. They are always doing and always working. That's an attempt to move from the pencil and paper, the lecture notes, to inquiry, hands-on, minds-on learning, which is going to prepare them for the future, for college and career. We have had many opportunities for professional development. We started with grades six through twelve. We've had Stevens University, we've had representatives from the State Department of Education, Liberty Science Center, and also representatives from FEA to do standards-based instruction. Teachers are now familiar with the standards. Now they are learning how to incorporate the engineering design process, which is different from what they are used to doing. How are they going to design a solution to a real-world problem? That's what they're learning now. So we did that for three years. Grades four and five are also trained. Now this year, we're doing grades K through five, as we are rolling out the new standards. This Friday, grades K one and two will be receiving this training. They will be using Styrofoam balls, and Legos, and many pieces of material to design different items. And they're gonna come away with many activities that they can use in their classrooms. So this is exciting for science. Another program that we are doing to train these teachers to be prepared for the standardized assessments now in grade five, eight, in high school, is we are participating in a K through eight program with Stevens University. It's the CEES program, the Center for Innovation and Engineering in Science Education. We have eleven trained ambassadors. There are eleven elementary school teachers, grades K, one, two, all the way up to grade eight. They are now leading professional learning communities within their buildings. We have forty-five teachers involved in this program, which is a huge number. They are staying after school for two hours a month, learning these best practices and collaborating with their peers. I hope to see the trends in the test scores go up as we go through the years. I think our grade four and eight data is pretty good, within the eighty percent and the seventy percent. But, like I said, next year, we're going to be seeing new data based on new standards and new testing. And it will be technology-based, just like the part testing. Right now, the NJES is paper, pencil. So the Science Department goals right now is to prepare the teachers to teach in the way that's going to help these students be successful, and also continuing to provide the professional development for them, and also looking at the data within the PLCs. The PLCs are set up in the elementary school. First time we've ever had science content elementary school professional learning communities. We have them in the high school also, and they're gonna look at their data. We're gonna have benchmark assessments now, in addition to the quarterly tests, which are the quarterly assessments, to really see where they are in the middle of each marking period, in addition to at the end of each quarter. So Science Department is looking forward to an exciting school year as we move forward with the new testing requirements for 2017-18. Thank you.
Quick question on this, Tara. Passing the biology, are they required for gradu-, is it a graduation requirement?
Currently, right now, they're required to sit for the test whenever they are enrolled in a biology course. So if they are-
Score that they have to achieve?
A passing score is a two-hundred currently.
It's required for graduation.
It's not required for graduation. They're required to sit, which means they have to sit for the test.
Okay.
If they-
First time they're in the course.
If they repeat the course, I believe they have to sit again for the test.
That's a change?
It'll be two years or so, but I believe they have to sit. Every time they're enrolled, they sit in the course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, I hope we provided you with a comprehensive review of the part scores, and I'd like to thank you for your conversation. I'd like to thank the directors for being here. And if there's anything else, I turn it back over to our superintendent.
I just wanna say, it's not always as obvious to us, no matter how involved we are. All the changes you are encountering or instituting, even though we hear it, it's still, tonight, is yet another level of it. You're working very hard, all of you, and I appreciate what's going on and the commitment from all the teachers.
Thank you.
I also think that if-
We could have them be part of our curriculum meetings. I think that'd be also a big help.
Great question. So we could bring a guest director?
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Degman.
Thank you.
We've been working on the preschool grant. Facilities have been put in place. We'll go over this later in the next meeting. But I just wanted to share with you something that went online today, which is our promotional video for the preschool. And I thank Monica and Justina Flynn for putting us together.